Hang on. Let me know when we get started.
You're good.
Okay, we're good. All right, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. And our county clerk will lead us.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning, everyone. Ruth, I guess this is going to be some things that you'll be working on. It looks to be your exhibit, but I don't see that exhibit. So is that not?
We just put that there in case we need to.
Okay, all right, well, cool. 10 o'clock's done, that way we move up five more minutes, three more minutes. We have a discussion and decision on the transfer of revenue account and controls from Fayette County Urban Renewal Authority and the Fayette County Commission. So that's our first agenda item. That's actually, whose meeting is this going to be? Their meeting?
It's all of our meetings.
Yeah.
So I set the agenda, and these are all things that I had sent out via email.
Okay, Gabe, we need you to come up front here and speak loud so everyone can hear in the Zoom land. You're good right there.
You're okay? All right, so these are, yes, these are agenda items I did send out in an email and spread it by the commission to see if this was agreeable. I wasn't sure as far as the governance aspect of transfer the revenue account. I believe the URA had a meeting this past Friday, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And so then the question at this point is, does there need to be motion made to transfer the revenue account controls from the URA to the county commission that already happened on Friday?
We met and had some discussions, but also due to the fact that we had not really had a chance to talk to council, had not committed any decisions. We still are trying to understand the best process forward. As, you know, I've said in the past, we totally support the farm and what they've done. And we appreciate the commission's support of the farm and what they've done. But we wonder, you know, should this money be transferred to the commission or should it be transferred to the commons? You know, so we are in a position where we're trying to figure that out.
I think we need Mr. Taylor here, though.
Oh, he has moved his car.
Yeah, I don't, I think, I think he needs to be.
Yeah, yeah. Just one thing, what are you referring to as the commons?
Agrarian commons.
Okay, at this point, agrarian commons, as far as I'm aware, does not have.
Yeah, at this, at this point in time, I think we add a layer of complication before, you know, I think we get to the point involving the commons later on when we're, that, that happens around when the property gets transferred as well. But I think the way that I see what's happening is like, we're kind of reducing the amount of people involved. And that sets us up to make like an easier transition when everything is in place to do so. And I guess from like my perspective, the questions I have are, right, it's kind of like dissociating the farm from the URA and those three items that make it associated with the URA really come down to excise tax revenue account, the nearest community farm revenue account, and the lease. And that that's kind of what we're talking about today is how to associate that from the URA, move that into, under the commission, but setting it up so that we're basically still managing those accounts to be used for the farm, that that is the agenda of the commission. I guess that's like something that I would, I'm interested in having clarity on. And then a discussion around what, what happens with the lease. And at this point, this seems to be like URA and commission having a discussion, farmland and URA, and then farmland and the commission, and involving the commons at this point would actually like further complicate things. And I think keeping it streamlined under the commission would be beneficial right now because, right, we still manage work pay at money commission staff. I think if we were to like operate on land owned by a farmland and then like lease to the commons, then it sets us up to have to make another agreement between a commission and the commons. And at this point, I think that's, that's just an added layer of complication that's like hopefully not necessary as long as we're all on the same page about what we want to see happen with the farm project and really in the same direction in terms of like working the transition plan. And if we're in agreement in that, I think it doesn't really make sense to involve the commons.
Yeah, that's correct. I, I agree, Susie. Let's leave the commons out of this. They're not a part of this discussion at this point in time. However, they will be a factor later on. Yeah, man.
Yeah.
Can you stand up and maybe come forward a little bit?
Sure.
So people can actually hear you on, out in the Zoom land.
I'm just curious. I, I do believe the commission and URA has the same best wishes for the success of the farm. But I think I speak for most of us on the URA. It's our understanding that this was an initiative of the commission that the commission would take under its wing the operation of the, of the farm in the hope for the future success of it. Could you give us a little background on how the commission came to that decision? What better the commission might do in terms of funding of the farm? And are we going through something that terribly complicates processes that's well underway for the sake of question mark what?
Okay, Ruth, can you do it from the financial end? Give him, let's start with the financial end of how the accounting was sort of.
Well, that's what I was going to say, I think, Mr. Taylor. I think there's a whole structural issue with the way everything was set up. I think this is how this meeting came to, and Mr. Taylor can probably speak on it more. But I think that is the reason for this meeting. Everything's been structurally done incorrect from what we understand. Mr. Taylor, you can probably speak on that a little better. I thought that's what this meeting was about mainly.
Absolutely, so the.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I'll come up.
Thank you.
The, the problem from a legal standpoint that we have here is the URA's authority to acquire, develop, work with land is limited by statute, okay? You don't have, the URA does not have unfeathered power to acquire and develop any land in Fayette County if they want. The urban renewal authority of Fayette County can only acquire land that is subject to a redevelopment plan, okay? This is all outlined in 1618, okay? So for the urban renewal authority to be developing, acquiring, working with land outside of a redevelopment plan, that's in violation of statute. There's no redevelopment plan that we are aware of that has been created by the urban renewal authority, went through the proper procedure, including going through the planning commission and then ultimately being approved by the Fayette County Commission with respect to the, with the farm. So that's the problem. That, so that's why we have a problem here, is the urban renewal authority is, has some sort of an interest in this farmland that statutorily it should not. So that, that leads us to why we're having this meeting here, which is where we need to figure out how to stop the urban renewal authority from acting outside of its statutory mandate and get it back into the power of the Fayette County Commission.
Would it not, if that is the singular problem, would it not be easier for the urban renewal authority to go back and do a development plan that, that shows what the vision is for the farm? I mean, clearly there is a vision, and it's been expressed, and, and it's certainly well on its way. Would that not be the county's route to take?
Probably not, because right now we're acting, right now the, the urban renewal authority is acting massively outside of the statutory scheme. In fact, there's probably arguments that can be made that any of the contracts that you entered into, any of the agreements that you entered into are all null and void at initial, from the beginning, okay? So in order to avoid that, we can transfer it back. It's ultimately up to the commission, but the legal advice that, that we currently have is based upon the fact that under 18, or 1618C, an authority shall not acquire real property for redevelopment project unless the governing body of the community in which the redevelopment project area is located has approved the redevelopment plan as prescribed in section I below. The process to develop the re, the process to develop a redevelopment plan is lengthy. On top of the fact that the farm, the, the, the URA can only operate in areas that have been deemed to be blighted or a slump. We have to declare the farmland blighted or a slump before the URA could come in and have an ability to do that. It may or may not be a blighted or a slump, I don't know. But that's the other limitation on the ability of the URA. That, that's another, the URA was created by statute for very narrow purpose.
Thank you, sir. May I say something as vice chair of the farmland protection board? When the farmland protection board came forward with the idea to do this action out on that property, we came to the commission and asked the commission, and they actually have a letter. They granted the permission for us to go into that project and to work with the URA in conjunction as of least seen. So does that not come back to the commission to be misinformed and?
Well, it might, and that's why we're here today trying to fix this situation.
I really don't want to get so caught up in like looking back. So is it your, is your recommendation that, and is it the commission's interest to say, this action that you're taking, your understanding and your legal advice is that the commission has the capacity to operate on this property in the way that we've can, like been working on this project? But that is all legally sound that we, they can have their staff operating on this project under grant funds and with money that's been allocated from the excise tax and with the revenue account money to continue to carry on the management project, and that is okay?
Sure, there's not a problem with that. The problem, the problem is not so much in what is going on at the farm. The problem is, of course, you know, you have to have a lawyer come in and make things complicated, right? The problem is, is the designation. The, the URA is the entity that has some sort of a legal interest in that, and statutorily cannot. That's just, the, the actions that are going on at the farm appear to be fine. Things like that appear to be fine, but from a statutory standpoint, the, the fact that the URA is involved in this project when there is not a redevelopment plan in place related to this farm is, is the issue, okay?
I think we do have a redevelopment plan that was revised a year ago, and it includes the farm, of which we've had a county commissioner for 15 years running on our board the whole time, who's been participating in it. So the only thing we really lack is them approving the redevelopment.
And if that's what's lacking, that's still a significant lacking. And, and just, just to be clear, the fact that a county commissioner is or, or is not on the URA is not binding the county commission to any act or inaction by that specific county commissioner on the URA. The, the county commission can only act as a body, it cannot act solely, you know, Commissioner Brennan cannot do something for the commission unless it's been approved by the commission. So the, the, what, so there's a ton of boards that the county kind of sets up, and a lot of times they'll designate a county commissioner to be either an executive officer on that board or sometimes a voting member on the board. But that's more so to make sure that the commission has an understanding of what's going on. They're, they're directly involved, they have an understanding, it can come back in. If there's commission action that needs to be taken, then it can go through the formal process to go through that. So, so that's, that's really the issue is, it's more so that the, the way that I view it in looking at all of this is the URA is acting outside of its redevelopment plan, and that needs to change. As to how that changes, that's ultimately up to the county commission. But I, my view would be the easiest solution, in my opinion, would be just redo some of the contracts as, you know.
You have a question?
Yes.
Have you seen the new redevelopment plan?
I've seen all of the.
And what did you think of that redevelopment plan? Was it adequate?
Well, it meant the statutory requirements as to whether.
That's good.
Well, but it, to meet the statutory requirements, it's, it's honestly, to meet statutory requirements, the statute lays out what needs to be in. So it's not hard to meet statutory requirements. As to whether it's quote unquote good, that's not my decision, that's up to the county. But it meets the statutory requirements.
From a legal standpoint, it seemed like it met the, it met the order, right?
It met the statutory requirements.
And so all, you know, COVID thing and all that really slowed down people's ability to intervene. But that, that plan's waiting for approval.
If it hasn't been approved, then it's not in effect.
So that must be a remedy for us?
We have to go back and look. The problem, though, that I, I do have is if it includes the farm, has the farm been declared a slum or a blighted area? That, that, that would be a number one problem now. And that would be something that you'd have to look at the specific areas within the redevelopment plan as to whether they contain slum or blighted area. And, and there's specific requirements of what, what deems a slum or blighted area.
Susie, what we got?
So, I mean, we could do this like all meeting about like the back and forth on what has and hasn't been done and about the gray area that we've been operating in, the person like responsible for managing the project. Like that is my responsibility. Like, what seems to make sense is we're operating in a gray area and we need to not do that. I, I'm interested to know that it is like, each commissioner is like, it's your intention to see the project protected, and this is like the intention behind making this move is to protect the status of the project and continue to let the plan and vision for the project play out. And that includes like operating under the transition plan. Is that like what your all's hope for doing this is?
I'll tell you where I stand, and it's not just about the farmland, the farm. It, it's about a lot of the things that, I think, I think the URA was set up as it was at the time. My guess is because there were more grants and things available maybe back then for urban projects, the rural projects. I'm not sure. But it has been acting outside the scope in several ways, and I don't think it's intentional or bad acts or anything like that. But we are, you know, currently subject to lawsuits as a result of some of that stuff, we're vulnerable. So what we did was we asked Mr. Taylor's firm to take a look at these contracts and these actions to, to try to seal those leaks, you know, figure out how we can insulate ourselves and our projects from, from attack or, or suit or whatever. And so, so yes, with regard to the farm, yes, we're trying to protect it. We're also trying to, you know, make people whole on the, if, if there were any wrongs done in the land sales we've done and things like that. We're just trying to get everything where it weighs, because I, I noticed some irregularities. Mr. Silla Birdy did. And then we consulted experts and confirmed that, yeah, there were some things that we needed to, to realign. So that's, that's my view of why we've done a lot of this stuff. I mean, I feel like we've, we're to a point now where, you know, an urban renewal authority isn't really what this county needs unless it is going to dedicate itself to dilapidated homes, which is what the statute anticipates it to do. If we decide we need that, and, and we do need it for dilapidated homes, but we have a meeting tomorrow that, where we're going to address the four committees that addressed dilapidated homes and decide whether we need four or whether we need one. So there are a lot of things that we're trying to do in a more streamlined way. But we also need to make sure that, you know, the things we have done and invested funds into are not vulnerable to attack. And, and that's what we've been doing.
And this meeting to me was to inform all parties that there's issues and the county commission wants to straighten them out. I don't think we're going to straighten them out here in an agreement. I think what the commission should do, and Mr. Taylor, I hope I'm not speaking out of term, is I think we should fix the issues in the agreements and then let, come back and let you all look at them and see what you agree and don't agree to. Now, I don't know whether that's the correct process or not, but I don't think us sitting here and hashing all this out, it, it will be here until 5 o'clock is signaled. I think the commission and their attorney, or attorney should fix the problem legally the way everything should be drafted. And then we come back in with a meeting and we go from there. And I don't know how the other two commissioners feel about it, but that's me.
And that specific problem you're referring to is?
The way everything's structured.
It's not just with regard to the farm, that's just one example.
It's one example, there's multiple things with the URA, the farm, with these groups here. There, it's multiple problems.
And again, and we're not casting aspersions on anybody. It's, it's more a matter of just discovering this over time and realizing that, you know, that, that these are things that make us vulnerable and the things that we've invested and the projects we've invested in are now vulnerable to lawsuit, as has been proven. We have three still pending against us that haven't been dismissed out of hand. So that's one piece of it. But another thing is the way we've been doing our accounting has been wrong. The URA has, in good faith, believed that the excise accounts and some of our other accounts are its and has used them in audits as, as, and then loan applications as assets when they're actually county assets. And these are, you know, all very intricate, you know, issues. But there are things that we discovered during our audit, and we have a CPA who's, you know, our county administrator now, and, and she's reviewed all of these things and spoke with the auditor about them and brought some things to our attention. And then we sent them through Mr. Taylor's office and have found that, yes, you know, some of these things, you know, are county funds and, and the URA has traditionally believed they were its funds and, you know, those sorts of things. So there's, there's a whole realm of things that, and, and again, I'm, I'm not sure whether it was the legal advice or whether it was the practice or what caused them all to happen, but now we're just trying to fix them. So we're doing things the way we're supposed to be. Because I think you know as someone who works with grants, that if, if somebody finds out we're managing something wrong or we're doing something wrong, that we're not going to be eligible to apply for grants. We'd be penalized for several years, and this county runs off of that.
I think the commission wants to state the statute. I mean, I think y'all would want to state the statute too. I mean, I would think you would want to be.
Susie, to answer your question for the commission, I won't, I'll just tell you. We've, we've missioned the farm quite a bit. We all want to see the farm successful, and we do want to see it go to the commons.
I think there's only one person here who really knows how structurally set this up or corrected, and that would be Mr. Taylor. I mean, I, I wouldn't know how to do it, we just know there's a problem. I don't think any, any of y'all would know how to do it. So my, my suggestion to the commission and everybody is let him structurally make the changes with the agreements, and then we come back and, and we sit down and, and look at it. We send them to you, and we come back and have another meeting. I don't know how John and Ms. Taylor feels about it.
Well, I, you know, I think that's in part right, but I also think Ruth has the financial expertise to make recommendations to Mr. Taylor, and then he can look over her recommendations. And as far as the contracts go, yes, but as far as the, you know, the accounting stuff, I think Ruth needs to go over the recommendations based on his legal advice thus far. And figure out how we need to structure this so we're in compliance with the statute, but.
Commissioner Lewis, so our in-house, the commission's own lawyer cannot do that work, so we're paying the county taxpayers or paying an outside entity to do the.
Well, here's the problem, ma'am, I don't know whether you've ever hired a lawyer before, but I've hired multiple lawyers, and I don't get to see Mr. Taylor for divorce. I don't go to see a divorce lawyer for Mr. Taylor's expertise. Sometimes lawyers may be good in a realm of several things. I think I mentioned your question. Sometimes we have to go to an expert that deals with statute on municipalities, cities, and states. I think that's what you asked me.
Exactly, I said your own counsel cannot do that.
I'll explain the difference. As a lawyer, I'll just tell you. I mean, Mr. Leesus is right. Well, in part, our insurance is paying because, because we're being sued. But, but in addition, Mr. Silla Birdy took office. He does have some expertise in this, and he, he recognizes problems, and that's pretty much what we're trained to do for generalists. And, and that's what he did, and he very practiced this. But he had a huge backlog due to COVID and do some other things, criminal cases, and some other things where people were in jail for over a year who shouldn't have still been in jail. He has a bunch of abuse and neglect cases, he has new staff, he had a lot going on. So it was going to take, it takes, I mean, Mr. Taylor has more than one lawyer working on this. This is such a big issue and requires such a specialized level. And they, that firm has a whole group of like property experts and, you know, municipality experts. And Silla Birdy is a municipality expert. He's represented Smithers, Montgomery, and, you know, lots of different municipalities. Yeah, yeah, he does have that experience, the problem is he doesn't have the time. It's a huge project, we didn't want to, if we gave it to him, we'd probably be here three years from now because he wouldn't have the time to dedicate, and we wanted to address these issues sooner than later. So that's the reason that we hired outside counsel, for efficiency and for the, for the level of expertise. Like it would just take Anthony a long time to get up to speed on some of these things. And not that he couldn't, but, you know, then he wouldn't be able to prosecute criminal cases.
She's a lawyer, she can explain it better than I.
So as I understand, what I, what I've heard today is that the commission is, is possibly going to realign all of the committees and, and maybe do away with the URA or the landing commission or whatever. So are you guys going to give us an outline of what our goal is? What we, what we can do, and not do? What is our mission?
We are having, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Tomorrow, we, we originally had a special meeting scheduled to address the committees because I'm one of those people who've been in government a long time, and I know that the more subcommittees you have, the less efficient you can be in a, in a county this size. I, I was surprised that we had so many, and I wasn't sure how many we were required to have or how many we had created. have or how many we created out of an impetus that no longer existed. And so I wanted to scrub those and make sure that we're being efficient because we, like I said, we have four organizations now that have a nexus to dilapidated housing. And so I just wanted to take a look. One that bugs me is we have this emergency response group that's required to have a plan for hazmat and we could be a regional group. I mean, we're a small county, so to have just this group dedicated, it's supposed to do all this stuff with regard to hazmat, transport and tracking, you know, it just blows my mind that, you know, a county this size has to have that. And I feel like in that case, we should probably partner with a larger county like Raleigh or whatever as the statute allows. But that's just one example. So we were supposed to have a special meeting. We moved that special meeting to tomorrow afternoon after the regular meeting. So we haven't actually had it yet. And of course this one got scheduled after and the timing is just bad, Steve. But, but I do believe, you know, just in general, without examining it further, that we may not need a U R A. We, I feel like personally that we would, we have experts at the New River Boards Regional Development Authority, which is an E D A, where we might be able to increase our support of it. And we have experts there and maybe could get some dedicated help here on all the infrastructure and the plan. They're going to fund the comp plan at the, at the price of $250,000, which is, you know, more comprehensive than anything we might have hired had we been inclined to. So, you know, I, I think we just need to examine all the possibilities and just scrub these committees and figure out which ones we need and what they should be doing and whether we need to, you know, and if we do consolidate them, we need to make sure that the statutory structure for each is met in, in the boards and things like that. As far as the planning commission goes, I don't think there's any plan whatsoever to scrap it, the, the zoning, you know, planning folks. I mean, we need that now more than ever. We're still examining whether we can staff that board the way we thought was the fairest, which is to open it up to new applications and rather than just pick who should stay since we reduced its size. But we may not be able to do that because we've made appointments and, and they last a certain number of years. So we're, we're just trying to do everything. We're taking a look at everything because the things that we've always done may not be what we need today. We have a different set of priorities and imperatives and especially with the national park. So that's what we're looking at and, and we will make sure everybody knows what they're supposed to do. And in fact, I'm trying to get, I know I'm on the Bridge Day Commission and, and the Bridge Day Commission didn't know it had the post-public agenda, but it's, it's a statutorily created, you know, and I had to ask that question of our experts, you know, is it subject to the Open Governmental Meetings Act? And the answer is yes. So we're going to try to get the Ethics Commission come down, offer training to board members who want to, you know, know how to conduct meetings or maybe new board members who don't understand the rules. But those are all things that we're, we're just looking at, but we haven't had a chance to until now because of budget drills and stuff.
My answer.
I'd like to bring everybody into order. Things that we're discussing at this time is not on the agenda. We must follow our agenda.
Can I ask a question that is on the agenda? So as a county employee, I want to work in the best interest of the county and we're not overstating in our department, but number seven was roles and responsibilities of the resource coordinator's office. So is my understanding that as of the two Fridays ago, our office is no longer to work on any U R A projects? Currently, the farm is still a little bit a U R A project and I have been tasked as of recently to take care of some of the counties and some of the bills. I do not want anything to fall through the cracks. I don't want water to be shut off, electric, and that's an extreme case, of course, but what are we to do in this moment to make sure that things are being taken care of while we figure out this whole process? Or what is a timeline that we could expect for this process so that Susie can continue working productively on her way and that the U R A can continue working productively in their way?
Is Ruth, is, could you take care of that until this thing's taken care of? I just throwing it out there.
Yeah, do you just tell me like you want the excise tax to take care of those bills? Susie and I were just talking about where, what goes. So until y'all figure that out, we can just have Gia taking care of those, all of the excise account, the commission account. We got a line on it.
She is our accounting specialist on staff.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's, that's helpful. So currently, if anybody isn't aware, there's one QuickBooks account that has all of the accounts under it. It is, you know, paid, the subscription is paid by the U R A. We have county logins as well, so it's kind of a shared asset, I guess. So at this moment, we would just stop using it and use the new excise taxes we've been bringing to the county and.
Yeah, basically. I guess, like, right, there's like the legal process for how like this, like. Dissociate. And then there's like the internal policies and procedures of county staff. And so it's like Ruth and I can work on that together, but then it's like, what is the specific process? You guys made a motion around pulling the excise tax back. Has there been any, any communication about the transfer of the money that's held in, you know, that's on the U R A books, like where?
That's what these agenda items are about.
Yeah, so I guess like that's, my understanding is like we would kind of move forward on that today because then we're like in more of a gray area where you like ask to pull back because it's still like on the U R A books and we are, have to pay, you know, credit accounts and we have utilities that need to get paid. Where are we now going with these invoices? What is that specific internal procedure? And like, have you got, like, that's not something that I can dictate. That's between you all as the people negotiating that and making that transfer happen and the legal soundness of doing that. And then it's like, okay, now we need to continue with like, we're still operating, you know? So I think that's like the gray area. It's like I'm operating in now where it's like we have this account that's sort of been transferred. We have this motion to not have like county staff in the resource coordinator's office, which I don't know if I like, am included in that, to not operate on the U R A project. So it's like now we're in even more of a gray area as an employee where it's like, okay, our internal policies and procedures are changing and what our roles and responsibilities are like changing, what entities we go to handle what business and what operations is like more muddled now. And so I guess my goal would be to have some clarity in moving out of this meeting around how, like what are my marching orders for the excise tax account? Who am I sending invoices to for the next monthly board meeting? For stuff we've been paying out of there? Has the money been transferred back? What is that process?
Okay, I thought that was a discussion. I thought that was.
So I need to give them their accounting information.
Yes, in my opinion, and everything that you're doing for the U R A, and I don't know about the other two commissioners.
Yeah, they stopped, but I just want to make sure because I haven't had any.
Well, I agree and I spoke with.
But I want to give them all the tools that are theirs.
I agree and I spoke with Gabe about getting this information together. Actually, we all did during a meeting, an executive session, we mentioned get their stuff together so we can submit it to them through our counsel. So counsel has record of what we've turned over and so they can operate and have all their documents and all their historical things. And so that included the accounting. I know Gabe was working on the documents and historical stuff and put a hard drive together. But, but all of that is, I mean, we have a duty to do that. And, but I don't want you doing it directly. It needs to go through counsel.
Yeah, so I guess that's like, right, if we're kind, if we're being asked to like navigate like the internal operations of how that looks, shouldn't we be engaging with him around that? Because then he can say, yes, this is actually a sound procedure and this is the way to set up the new.
Well, that's, that's what we just said, that Ruth, that Ruth and you can work with Ruth on the farm specific stuff, but, and Ruth will sign Gia to do some things and then submit a plan and, and have Mr. Taylor's firm look over it and make sure it's what we need to do. But as far as, it's almost, it's not discovery, but because we're in litigation, you know, whether we want to be or not, we're parties to litigation. We need to do that through our counsel and, and, you know, make sure, not that we're going to edit what we turn over, just, we're just going to track what we turn over.
Mr. Taylor?
I don't think so. No.
Mr. Taylor? Since we are in, or the U R A is in litigation with some other items, is it too premature at this time to look at moving the farm from them to us? Or would it be better to wait at this time and, and let them continue to pay the bills for, like they have been? What's the, what's our best?
So, so the problem is they're wrapped outside of statute. They're statute ordered. That, that's the problem. We got to get back into compliance with statutory authority sooner rather than later. There, there's been some ideas mentioned today from the U R A, how to get possibly back into statutory compliance. I know the commission has talked about that as well and, and, and so that's got to be the goal. The active litigation would not per se affect giving us back into.
Okay.
To, to address kind of the issue, I think, with respect to some of the concerns about the employees and getting bills paid and things like that, the simple solution to that is you submit all invoices that need to pay to Ruth. And then, because ultimately the county's paying the invoice and the county would have to pay the invoices through their invoicing and procedures. So that, that would just be a process that if there's an invoice that needs to be paid, that it goes to the county commission to be paid through the channels like that. Ultimately, if, if bills were being paid out of the excise tax, that's the county money anyway. It's just, it, it's just, we're just shuffling around some things. The, the flow of information, if you're, if you're a county employee, you should be going through the county for things that you need. Pay invoices and, and ultimately the county can determine whether this is a payment that the county makes or if there's an agreement with a third party that they're going to make that payment, but it should be a, a situation where if you're a county employee, you go through the county. You go to your chain of command, whether it be Ruth or your whoever it is, and they can go up to the chain ultimately to the county commission. That is the decision that needs to be made, made like that. Hopefully that provides clarity. The, the, to go back to, I, I want to, I want to also clarify maybe some confusion with respect to resource coordinator's office performing functions for the U R A. A little bit of brief history on that. There's a recent lawsuit that was filed where actions by the resource coordinator's office was attempted to be used to pin liability for acts of the U R A onto the county commission. And they said, your resource coordinator, employee, county employee, were doing these acts on behalf of the U R A, therefore you're liable. Well, as, one of the things I was retained to do was to try to disassociate liability for the county. As lawyers, we try to avoid the county getting sued. So the, the advice with that and, and ultimately the county commission role was you don't do things for the U R A. The U R A says, hey, send this lease out to so and so for them to, to review it. That's not your sole job as the resource coordinator's office. You can provide assistance to them in certain areas. Hey, we need this and then you can provide it to them and then they can provide it out. There's a situation where there are emails from the resource coordinator's office to a third party for things and functions specifically for the U R A and those emails were waved around in court as you're liable now to the county commission for that. So what we're trying to do is to create the line that these are separate entities by statute. These are separate entities. The U R A is a separate legal entity created by statute, ultimately authorized by the county commission to operate in county, but they're separate legal entities for purposes of law. All that advice is perform functions for the functions. You can provide assistance and resources to your entities that are under the resource coordinator's office, but you're not to be performing functions for them. There is another example, we got to know this, but a FOIA request was sent to the U R A and it was answered by the county. That can't happen because that, that puts the county in huge FOIA liability. And FOIA laws are, are no joke and you don't want to mess them up because attorney fees, things like that. So that's where we're trying to avoid those situations. To go back to another thing, by code, by statute, if the, if the U R A acts outside of its statutory authority and does things on property that they don't have the right to do, the statute makes clear that the loss is to be borne by the county. So that's what we're trying to clear up here are these things where we don't want the county to be sued for things that they ultimately didn't necessarily do. Maybe they approved it and if they did, we'll deal with that, but they're, they're, we're just trying to come into compliance with the statute. That's all we're trying to do. Someone mentioned, well, what are our roles and duties as the U R A? It's in the code, sixteen, eighteen, four and five. Read sixteen, eighteen, four and five, they specifically tell you what we can do and cannot do. And all within that code section, it says, within the air, the designated urban area, within the designated urban area, you can do these things. So that, that's what we're just trying to do. I don't think, in, 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 I don't think that this was done and it's been mentioned many times in bad faith or anything like this. This is a, a confusing statute. It's a, it's, it's a weird statute. It's a confusing statute. It's a technical statute. And that's why the county has looked to try to make sure all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed with respect to the statute. That's all that is, is going on. And ultimately the county will work with the U R A to ensure that i's are dotted, t's are crossed. Ultimately, what, what the deal is.
Mr. Taylor, the county created the U R A. Ultimately, anyone can sue anyone today.
Well, that's true.
Clearly because they created the U R A, even if they take the resource coordinator away, they still can sue the county commission, first of all. Second of all, I'm under the impression, I received an email, that lawsuits, the lawsuits against the county commission, against from a third party that we're having issues with, was thrown out with summary judge. So it's, it's ended as far as I know. That's not to say they can't come back and do something else, but I'm just saying that in third, we'd be in compliance if they approved our plan.
Ultimately, so to address those, one, yes, anybody can sue anybody, but we're not talking about being sued, we're talking about liability. So yeah, you're right, somebody can sue somebody, whatever, but at the end of the day, are you going to be liable for the acts of the lawsuit? And the argument was raised in the lawsuit that was dismissed might be compelling. I don't think that they're compelling in that specific case because it's a contractual dispute, but in other types of situations, it may be, it may be compelling and that's what, so we're not talking about being sued, we're talking about liability. They're, they're different because like you said, it costs, I think, $270 to file a lawsuit that can name anybody I want. But by filing that lawsuit and at the end of it, am I going to be liable or not? That's what we're talking about. And there is potential exposure, liability exposure that we're trying to clean up. Okay, so, so that's number one. Number.
So let me, before I finish, so if someone gets hurt at the farm and sues the county commission, would they be liable?
It depends. I mean, that's a lawyer answer, but it depends. Who, who owns the farm? Was it an act of the county?
They could be sued, so why is the county even, you know?
Well, somebody could sue, somebody could fall in the courthouse. So you're not going to be able to remove all liability, potential liability, especially for personal reasons. However, if you have acts or inactions by an entity that you know you can avoid, then you avoid them. You avoid them. And that's what the, the county wants to try to do is we've got hanging issues out here where right now by statute, the acts, if, if the U R A would decide that they could burn down the farm and the farm sues, the U R A is not liable under the statute. The county commission is. And right now, the county commission couldn't stop the U R A from doing something at the farm. So that, that's the problem that, that we're having. That's what we're trying to avoid. Now, that, that's the issue, it is avoidance of, of areas where there's potential reliability. That's all that FOIA was down to. And that's an issue because it's outside of statute and there's statute provisions that makes the county liable. So we can clean that up. That's, that's, we can be cleaned up.
Just a second, Susie, let him answer the other two questions that Jeff had, so we just.
The, so the lawsuit, yeah, right now, the order's not been entered, but it was only a motion to dismiss on the pleadings. They, they have a right to amend the complaint. I don't know if they're going to or not. However, that's a lesson. If we, if the county commission is able to avoid being sued. However, that's a lesson. If we, if the county commission is able to avoid being, you know, was able to get out of this and, and if they decide not to amend the complaint and the county commission walks away from it, that's a lesson. That we got lucky this time. That's a lesson to be learned. Every lawsuit should be a lesson. And that's a lesson that the county can learn that we've got these issues. Who knows what else is out there? We got. And something else could come back out there. They could amend their complaint and bring us back in and we've gotta fight it out again. But it's a lesson and the lesson learned from that is that there are acts or inaction by county employees on behalf of the URA that may be used to pin liability on the, on the county commission and we're trying to avoid that. That's what we wanna do. Can we avoid every liability? No. But if you can identify a potential for liability and do take actions to remedy it, that's what I would hope that you would want the county commission to do. Is you don't want the county to expose itself to lawsuits. And this is an area where they can separate themselves to try to limit or avoid liability. I think I answered the questions there, but is there, was there one other point? I think you mentioned three points. I can't remember.
I can't remember anything.
I guess my, so my question, since like we're at this idea of liability around the farm is like, I would like specific answers and like to listen to this kind of theory about what's going on. So like, what is your recommendation? If the expectation is, is that we're removing the, the financial interaction of like the excise tax account and the revenue account? And then there's this idea of the lease and that's like really the URA operating on that property is in, in, from your perspective is that that's outside of the statute. So what is your recommendation around that specific function of Fayette County Commission staff operating a Fayette County Commission project on a piece of property owned by farmland? How would you see, what would you see some type of agreement structured to?
Suzy, I'm, I'm just gonna stop you. That's legal advice and I'm not, I would rather him give that advice to the commission and you as a commission employee in a legal, in an executive session, legal setting. That's not something, you know, if we wanna agree to answer that question and go into session today, we can. But I don't wanna get legal advice in a public forum.
Okay, I, I, yeah, I understand. I guess that's like, those are the specific process answers that allow us to continue to move forward and move out of this gray area. And so.
Yeah.
I guess that's, I, I.
Well, in my, in my opinion, I don't mean to interrupt you, but that's what I was saying. I think, I think he should go ahead and, I don't know where we're gonna do this, go ahead and make the changes. He thinks to me to be, need to be made. We're gonna, we'll be here two days trying to discuss it. I think as legal counsel for the commission, he needs to make the changes and then we come back to the table.
Well.
With everything.
Yes. And I guess I kinda thought that there would be like, here's a recommendation on how to move forward. And then both parties are saying, yes, we agree to this like legally sound recommendation. And so I, I guess, yeah, I'm just wondering.
Well, I don't see the URA's counsel here, for one. And I thought, I thought he would. Okay. Yeah, so.
Fuzzy connection and it's hard to hear.
Yeah, and that's, and I mean, and, and to me, that's a problem. I thought we were gonna get more in the weeds on some of these things, but it's my understanding, okay, we have the excise account, which we've already voted to, you know, resume control of or whatever. We're not providing those funds. The revenue account was questionable. That was something that I really didn't understand. The legalities because that's, you know, that was an account established by the URA, owned by the URA. It's not county funds at this point. So that was something that I had hoped we would have some solution to. Credit accounts, I, I'm not aware of what the credit accounts are. Can you tell us what those are?
Yeah, so we just have credit accounts with vendors that we use frequently. So right, we have like the Lowe's account, we have Johnny's account. I've got other suppliers that we frequently order from. And a lot of, I think those accounts are exclusively paid out of that excise tax. So then it's just like the process of switching, yeah, the name from the URA to the Fayette County Commission and then continuing to pay out of the account associated with that, that we can move forward with that process?
Or, or handling it however our accounting folks feel like is more efficient. Like if the P-card is a better way to do that or whatever. I mean, I, I leave that up to, to Ruth and her staff to, to decide how we should help you purchase what you need to purchase.
Okay. And I guess just because there's like, right, we've made that change, but then, right, we have some of those accounts that are gonna be expecting payment this month. That will have the URA's name on them. That will get the bills sent out. I can still send those down to?
Yes.
Okay.
And so utilities, I'm guessing this is, this item is with regard to the farm. We don't pay utilities on behalf of any other URA.
We have not been.
Place or thing. Okay. And then the MOU, I mean, I'm just seeing it. We have discussed and we do need MOUs with anybody for whom we're providing services for the reasons Mr. Taylor explained. We can't with the URA right now because we're in litigation. But we have to have very distinct lines drawn about what we're doing, whose responsibilities are what, who's acting under whose authorities in these MOUs. So I would want Mr. Taylor to have the opportunity to review this and give us some advice and also have the time to do it myself. So I do think that that's something we need to work on with farmland, on, on the services we're providing. I don't think the areas are as gray with farmland. We're most, and, or solid waste. Like we're basically giving services as far as bill paying and that kind of thing. But, yeah, but we're not really doing any, you know, we're not taking any substantive actions. They're more ministerial. So that's the kind of thing that we just need to have the MOUs in place so we can decide. And then if farmland funds, you know, pays for those services, as does solid waste. So those are things that we just need to get agreements in place. So it's not nebulous if we are sued in the future for something farmland does. But again, those areas, those are much easier to discern than the URA. There was so much. The way everything stood up and the resource coordinator's office, from what I understand about the history, is very different. I mean, it's very intermingled where the other roles seem to be more ministerial and not substantive, but.
And not speaking for the Department of Farm Protection Board, but we, we are emphatic in our belief of the project, you know? And, and I will, you know, agree that Fayette County has never done anything like this through the Farm Protection Board. It was new territory, but it has proven the exact point that it was elaborated and prop, prop to like. And this kind of stuff can work. It can benefit a poor county like Fayette County. It can not only help in actually solving food issues for the local people who are living in, deplited in a condemned area, which is why we have a URA, because that area is considered that. So we are emphatic in our support of the project and we do not, you know, want to see anything be in the way of the actual day-to-day operations. Not that you are. So we're, want to work through an MOU situation with you guys and get this stuff done. If we need to meet as an executive committee with the board, we are happy to do that. Whatever we can do to facilitate a smooth transition of the entire system, we are for that.
Thank you.
Okay, well then, then, then you should be very happy that we're doing this because the farm would be in jeopardy if we weren't taking these steps. So, all that said, one of the things that, you know, I had hoped, and I really don't think we can do this without your lawyer here, the URA board, because it's just too hard. Like you said, she can't really hear. She's not here to take you aside and advise you, you know, just like we would go with Mr. Taylor. If we had some questions, we wanted to ask him, you know, for specific legal advice. But, but I think we do need to discuss the Wolf Creek Park project and other things. I know you guys wanna get that resolved and get that land, you know, dispensed with.
We're changing from now in the farm to Wolf Creek Park.
We, yeah, we are because I think we've talked.
Yeah, I have, I have a question before we do that. It sounds like what Tom wants to do, which I think makes sense, is put all this in writing and get a draft, get a straw man, and there it is, in black and white.
Simplest way to do it.
Drop it until we got that, right?
In my opinion, that's the simplest way to do it.
Right, is that, is that a motion type thing?
I mean, I don't.
What, what do you mean, get all of this in writing? I don't think generally.
The farm, specifically the farm, how that's gonna go. Get all that, get a draft of how that's like the new lease or a new, whatever it takes.
Well, we, there are obviously all these different components to it. So they, they have to be done. Anybody who's been divorced knows that we can't just say, okay, take URA off of the credit account and put county. Like we have to reapply for all that.
Maybe I wasn't clear. Tom said, "Let's let John put all this in writing as a draft." And then we can see specifically how this, what the commission.
And in other words, discussing it all day and day is not gonna work. I, I suggested to the commission that, that Mr. Taylor would just write everything up the way he thinks it should be wrote up and contracts, agreements, MOU, blah, 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 comes to the commission. We go to executive session, whatever we discuss. Okay, then we have a meeting and say, this is, send it to everybody's lawyer, send it to everybody. If it's okay with John and Ms. Taylor. And then we come back and meet. We go from there.
I, I think some of it's just mechanics. I think some of it's just the finances, just figuring out how to transfer the finances over. The, the contracts are the main thing that the lawyers would get involved in and, and they should.
But what Tom's saying, that's kind of where things are.
Yeah, as far as the farm is, we're trying to fully transition the farm over to commission. Now, of course, you know, your other, your other issue is, is the park and trying to get that property sold and, and that sort of thing. And of course, we've had, we have several lawsuits right now going on over there between us. You know, we're out of one of them, but we may get back, you know, add it back in. The commission wasn't named in one of the others and I'm not sure about the third. I think we were named in it. So same, same plaintiff. I thought there was a third.
We're not. It's just the commission. I mean, just the URA.
Yeah, I know, but there, I thought there were three.
No, there's just two now.
Okay. All right.
So now we're moving to Wolf Creek Park. Yeah, just to be clear, we're authorized to use the excise revenues, but the transfer of the credit accounts from the URA to the county commission, we need to hold off on that?
I don't think we do.
Okay, so then. Yeah, so we're gonna work with Ruth, but just, so I wanna tread lightly in the gray area.
All right, I move that we transfer the funds, that we authorize the transfer of the credit accounts from the URA with regard to the farm to the commission in a structure that our county administrator, working with Suzy, think is proper.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on moving the farm's credit accounts to the county commission and work with Ruth to make sure things are going smoothly. Any questions? All those in favor? Anything else, Dave?
Utilities. Similarly, move that we transfer the utilities for the farm from the Fayette County Urban Renewal Authority to the Fayette County Commission.
A second. Okay, I have a motion to move all the utilities from the URA to the Fayette County Commission and which Ruth will take part of, taking care of. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye. All right, now, the revenue account's another matter. I don't know if you guys have had the chance to speak with your attorney about that or not, but if we're taking over all the responsive, you know, financial responsibility for it, the county should receive the revenue account as well, or the farm. So is that something that you guys can work with your attorney and then follow up with us? The revenue account for the farm?
Whatever Suzy thinks, I think we're probably gonna support.
Well, then, Suzy, you can talk to Mr. Taylor about this and figure out.
Yeah, I mean, we have a history, I think, the meeting in which the account was created. We can pull like the minutes from that up and what we said we'd use the account for. And I think that's also on the commission meeting agenda. So we can get those documents together and then propose how that transfer of that account happens and then the structure of it for the county can be worked out.
Okay, when is that on the agenda? Do we, is it on the agenda?
Yeah, we need to put it on there.
Cannot be talked about today.
What do you, what do you recommend? No, it's on today's agenda. I mean, I mean on a future agenda.
It's on today's. Number one. Number one. I was gonna say, it shouldn't matter what happened in the past as long as the, the commission agrees to do it and the farm.
Well, and I guess, yeah, I don't know, like, can the URA just say, hey, we created this account for this?
I, I think the URA needs to, I think the URA needs to vote. I mean, tell me like what you think.
So, I, I mean, I'm, I'm not the URA's lawyer, but if, if, if the URA had a revenue account that they created and revenue from the farm was given into that account, I, I'm, I think the URA needs to discuss what happens to the money that's presently in the account. I, I think it would, I think it would make sense that in future money, obviously, from revenue generated by the farm, obviously would go into account for the Fayette County Commission. I think that that's a no-brainer, but you have to talk with your counsel about that. But past funds, the, the money that's currently in that account, I think you all should speak with your counsel about whether that would be transferred to the Fayette County Commission or the URA would retain it.
I think Suzy's getting ready to base this.
Well, and I think what we could agree, like, that account was mainly being used for was reimbursement to the county anyways. It was like, again, another shuffle money back and forth between accounts. And so we've already agreed that, and it's budgeted pretty much for staff reimbursements.
Yeah, so I, I think that the URA needs to discuss with their counsel if they're willing to.
I think we would say that revenue account is a problem.
Okay.
And, and, but absolutely, there's no problem. Yeah, that's not great.
You guys have just make sure to talk with your, you know, if you're cool with it, you take action and, and then.
I have a wild guess, but has Abby been writing the checks for that kind of stuff? I mean.
So, I have, we do not write checks for the revenue account. What, everything's.
Who does that, Suzy?
Well, yeah, Gina was doing that. We write very few checks out of that account. It's like the spending on it has been very low and then like letting it build and then we're reimbursing the county. Those are gonna be the big checks.
My concern.
On the, yeah, with all the account statements that I spooked them after.
Right. My concern is that we have something formal from the URA authorizing that since the, because, so we don't have a county employee writing, stroking a check of a URA account to the county.
Again, I would talk with the URA's counsel, but I would believe that the URA would need to take some sort of official action to vote to, to authorize the transfer of the revenue funds, ownership of the revenue account to that Fayette County Commission. That would probably be an easy business.
It's not a problem. We just need somewhere to put it. We have to.
Right, we can create account.
Yeah, sure. That's, that's fine.
You just need to make a decision, I believe, to, to let, to let us do it and I believe we'll make the account. Is that correct?
Well, they.
Well, I tell you what, you wanna make, Dave had an idea. You wanna make a motion to form an account for that revenue?
So it would just be to write a check to the county?
It's already there. Okay.
Yeah. But it just, I just feel like because of the, I mean, because of the lawsuit, that there has to be an official action authorizing it because we've had all this intermingling of.
Well, I agree. If y'all, if y'all was maintaining it anyway, I think you do have, I, I agree with Ms. Taylor, she's a lawyer. I think you have to make a motion to do it anyway.
We were gonna do that Friday. We just didn't know where to put it.
Okay, so.
We write a check to you or we write a check to a new account? We have an account set for that.
Yeah, my, my preference was that that maintains its own separate account, right? Like it's a line item. It's still named.
It'll still be separately identifiable in its own line item.
Okay, that's all.
Hey, Suzy, don't you sometimes combine some grant revenue and that side?
We don't combine it, but we, we match it. We match revenue over grants and then we backfill like staffing or, or paid out of several accounts. It's like multiple grant accounts.
Okay, so it sounds like what you guys, after consulting with your counsel, please, should do is, is that your next meeting, vote, you know, about transferring this money, close the account, write a check, close the account. And then once it gets here, Ruth and Suzy will figure out how to make sure that it's, I mean, it'll just be a separate line item rather than a separate account, but it's still gonna be dedicated to the farm. It's not gonna. So, so that, that takes care of the first one. We already dealt with the excise stuff. And the MOU, I think we need to postpone. So.
With the farming protection board?
Yeah, because I, I'd like counsel to look at it, make sure that the, that the responsibilities are legally delayed. Michael, yeah.
Michael, I'm sorry. Michael Taylor.
There's no Ken here either.
No, we're not, my dad was an orphan. I'm not related to. No, we're not, my dad was an orphan, I'm not related to any other Taylors, so. Or living Taylors, anyway. So, I, I move that we postpone this M O U and, and also an M O U with anybody else to July twenty-two, to give Mr. Taylor and his staff time to review it and make recommendations and changes. July, I'm sorry, twenty-two July.
That's what you said.
Did I say?
You said July.
He said July, I was, I was confirming it was July night.
All right, y'all are messing me up. Okay, so I move that we postpone item five to July twenty-two to give our counsel time to review it and, and to discuss. I mean, you guys can, you know, if you want to retain counsel, you can, but I think it's gonna be what it's always been, it's just to make sure it's sufficiently delineated in the agreement.
But meanwhile, we're gonna be in this, we're still stuck in this.
No, we're gonna continue doing what we've been doing, it's just, I think those are less, I mean, is that your thought?
The farm is, in my opinion, simple. The Farmland Protection Board had a lease with the U R A. The U R A would need to vote to terminate the lease, the Farmland Protection Board would need to vote to accept that termination, and then the Farmland Protection Board would need to enter into lease with the Fayette County Commission. I, I can't remember, I looked at the lease, I can't remember if the, if the lease has any sort of assignment in it. I don't think it did, which, that would have been the easiest thing, where the U R A could just have assigned the lease to the Fayette County Commission. I would recall seeing that language in there, so that, that would be the process to get the, to get the lease out of the name of the U R A and into the Fayette County Commission. And so that, that's what we're just needing to be done. And that would get, then that would wrap up the farm and, uh, the farmland, the farm and the U R A's involvement. The accounts have been transferred, the role of the possibility, the last hanging string is the lease. But obviously, the U R A would need to speak with their counsel and see if that's acceptable. Land Farmland Protection would need to take that under advisement and all of that, but that would be the proposal.
And we agree, I mean, that's what we have all talked about ourselves, making that simple three ways. But all based on agreement, you know, the M O U's, like you said, come, we're gonna go through them and make sure that they keep vision that.
Sure, yes, the lease, lease, the lease would be a separate issue than the M O U. Uh, the lease is just the, 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 you know, the ability to operate on the land.
Thanks for raising that.
Would, uh, would.
About how we operate.
Yes, exactly, exactly. So that, that would be the recommendation with the lease. And, and, but that would take, I think, I think that would involve official action by all of the relevant authorities to do that.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to postpone until July the twenty-second, all those in favor?
And can we also make sure there's an agenda item for the solid waste, assuming it's still in its current incarnation? What, oh gosh, are you kidding me?
Yeah, the twenty-second is a Thursday.
We're having a meeting on a Thursday instead of.
Yeah, just like we did today, because it could be weather, weather lengthy, instead of just a fifteen minute or thirty minute.
So you want a special meeting on the twenty-second?
Yeah.
I didn't know that was what you were. All right. So Wolf Creek Park, I think there are several issues with Wolf Creek Park, and it's my understanding that the N R G R D A had had a study of that, of the park some time ago. And among the things, the study concluded, from my understanding, is N R G R D A, anybody on the call?
They're here tomorrow.
Okay, well, that said, I mean, one of the things that was my understanding was it determined that it was not as feasible to develop it commercially as, as we originally thought, or industrially, that it's probably optimally developable residentially. It may be small businesses, but not anything big out there. If that's true, I, I've had a couple of people suggest to me, well, you know, why don't we subdivide it? And then sell off lots, you know, subdivide the lots and sell off the lots individually, rather than try to sell off the whole park. And then use the revenue from the more easily developable lots, where we might be able to pay for infrastructure out to the ones that are more easily developable, and then once they're developed and sold, then move that revenue on to try to make the others more optimally developable. Is that something that sounds reasonable, or is that something, because you guys are the experts on it? I mean, you've been, you know, involved in it all this time, but, you know, I just want to know what your thoughts are on that. Are you?
To drill down a little deeper on, on the idea.
Okay.
At this point, regardless of what's happened in the past, you know.
I don't even want to talk about that. Let's figure out how we're gonna get this park developed, and we need residential, we know we need housing.
Housing, housing is the big top aspect. When you look at the balance of property in Wolf Creek Park, it's nine hundred ten acres. And the cost of developing most of that property is pretty big. There is, however, a section of that property that lends itself well to development, and that is beyond the D E P, that high ground that extends all the way to the back of the Woodgate subdivision, off of the Wood Road. That probably is closer to a hundred and twenty acres where there would, there would be impact from like, that's, that's the volume. The land available out there, the balance of the property, which is where all the trails have been made. You know, the concept was that the cost of developing most of that property, where it's low and wet and very, very up and down, is better preserved as, as green space, as recreational resource, to actually compress the value of the balance that is developable and shift the focus from commercial or industrial to housing. That seems like a win-win cross of words, you know. The trend has been a lot of adjustment in both, you know, people's sweat equity and money, and the West Virginia Land Trust submitted the name of the land last year, and it basically spelled out that range, where they were receiving nine hundred thousand dollar grant. The West Virginia Housing Development Fund, which is a lender on this project, we own two point one million dollars, would provide a very discounted deal with the West Virginia Land Trust to own the seven hundred and fifty acres that is the parkland, green space, whatever you wanna call it.
It's a big dip.
For all this, and then tee up the balance, this hundred and twenty acres with a banana that goes out to the back of Woodgate subdivision. And, and look for opportunities to help that now. You know, I, I personally feel like the county should never be a point player in any kind of development scheme. Public investment is viable in as much as it sparks private investment, and that's what we need. You know, so often we lose respect in West Virginia about what really makes a rural development. It's not government grants, it's government funding, it's private investment, it's cap. And so, whether it's subdivided, whether a developer buys the piece, I think it would, might be a benefit to tee that up and present that value compressed scenario to a developer. But it's not that simple, we have that seven acre site, okay, across from D E P. That seven acre site, you know, it was, it has a long history to get it to where it is. Where it is now, it's a big flat seven acre site, it's actually twelve acres altogether, but the flat area is seven acres. And utilities haven't been run there yet, because we've been, you know, struggling with a way forward. And there is some money that, of course, coal, that, coal severance, reallocated, coal severance tax and stuff is dropping. We really don't have the funds. The notion that land sales in Wolf Creek Park would fund the development was naive. And so, that seven acre site is on the market for three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Like, do we want to invest and, and move that? We want to, what do we want to do with that seven acre site? It's the only big site out there, the whole bus, the whole county bus complex. And that would be great for the town. Or just someone talking about putting the soccer complex out there. Or, there used to be talk about a Pepsi distributorship out there, you know, I think the interest on everyone's part with the housing needs is a shift towards a community-based development plan for that property. And, and so the West Virginia Land Trust is still interested in that power. And they, through that grant process last year, developed a relationship with folks in the West Virginia Housing Development. The Housing Development Fund sees this value of developing that high ground for resident, for, for housing, and they see the value of protecting the balance of the property. And if you put that in context of kind of where things are headed in Fayette County, it seems like a great. You know, I think everyone on the U R A, this is my impression, I can totally wrong, is that we wanna, we, we wanna find an exit plan. We want, we want to get it off the back of the county. We want to, in some way, put this debt to bed and, and, and end this chapter of maybe, you know, overzealous notion about what public funding do. And we believe that it was more attractive than ever right now, just, we just need to tee up the opportunity. And really, and, but I think it's important that we work together, because anyone coming to the community, they want to see, you know, everybody collaborating, working together.
Can I ask you guys to do something? What would really be helpful to me is if you came together and made, and presented to us your plans and, and like, what's on the market, what, what is your strategy? When do we decide that strategy doesn't work? Is there, have you revised, or if you have a revised recommendation, recommendations for a revised redevelopment plan, can you bring that to us?
Well, that's been out for, you've never seen that?
I've not seen it.
That's been floating around.
But I mean.
You haven't changed it though, you haven't changed, you just said you, you haven't changed it any?
Excuse me?
You said, I mean, well, I understand, we're talking about changing it and going a different direction and just go housing, maybe, is that what?
No, that's what, that's, that's what's.
Let me ask, I got one question about, is there any, do you, do you plan on anything else out there as far as any kind of development other than housing?
Recreational development.
Okay, that's.
You know about the amount of volunteer bonds that happen, right? There's a lot of awareness, more people go to Wolf Creek Park and everywhere, and there's a trend there, okay? And I think there's been a lot of discussion about this direction, and, and it makes sense. But I just want to say that the Fayette Trail Coalition, we just received a coal heritage grant to improve, to install trailhead facilities out there, you know, I mean, is that correct? That's mainly what that is. West Virginia Land Trust is still very interested.
What other recreational that you want to put out there, spend money to put out there, Gene?
What's that?
What other recreational, uh, and recreational you want to put out there and spend money on?
Well, we're spending, Fayette Trail Coalition's spending money right now.
Well, I mean, well, the county doesn't have to spend any, nobody else is, you're talking about not any, any other money for recreation?
There's that design thing, this coal heritage grant, I mean, we're always looking at other.
Well, you said other recreational stuff, I mean, I'm trying to figure out what other recreational stuff.
Increase the trailer. We got a lot more, got a lot more, you know? And that's both on the difficult day and on the easy day.
But Tom, that would be done with grant or, or private, I mean, we, we don't really have.
Okay, I was just curious.
But.
And I, and I also think that, you know, the money that we do have, whether it's in our coal reallocated or, or whatever, the, uh, the other funds would be utilized to help run the utility that's.
No, I, I really don't think you have any more coal reallocated.
I don't know about that, but, but, um, this design of this additional, you know about the trails.
We know what yours is.
You know what the trails are talking about, and that we're pursuing funding to get those to go. Okay, after this design thing's over, it'll be a couple more months probably. You know, we're kind of doing that, you know, there's been a lot of talk about earmarks and E D A, et cetera. You know, we're just seeing if we can't make something stick there, because it's county property, it's public property, and if we can improve the offering on public lands in the county, then that's good for the economy, that's good, that's good for the community. But, um, what we do need to talk about, and we've had cost opinions, Jim Christie at C T C Engineering's been super helpful. He was involved in the seven acre site, is we need to extend utilities to that site, so we can get that out of the market. I mean, we, the one thing we can't do is just pretend like Wolf Creek Park doesn't exist and walk away, you know? We need, we need to, we've got a great opportunity moving forward to get this right and get it out of the county.
What is the estimated cost to extend utilities just to that?
Just to the seven acre site. But was that everything?
I think it was eight hundred and fifty thousand. Road and everything.
That was the cemetery, was one.
Oh, okay.
Was, we're talking three hundred, two hundred yards, three hundred yards.
To the seven acre site.
To the seven acres, some of us closer than others, so it's not, you know, they're not all upending in the same place, so.
Right.
We, we're, I think it's a hundred eighty-three thousand was.
Do you remember?
Does that run along the road, everything is running along the road? So then whoever bought it would be responsible for branching off the road, right? I mean, I wouldn't want to send. Run the main and then let them, if there's somebody's gonna buy it, let them branch off.
Were there issues with Oak Hill taking over? I, I hear stuff, so does Oak Hill have to do, like a sewer?
Yeah, Bill, Bill, conversations I've had with Bill Anabasis, they don't want to extend, they don't want to take over any additional sewer infrastructure beyond the seven acre site.
Is that, have you guys talked to him?
Yeah, you, I, I mean, that's, I've, I've had conversations with him, he verified himself and maybe give this.
Is that something that, I mean, because, as you know, we do have.
Unless we're annexed, sorry, let me rephrase.
Yeah, annexed, yeah.
Unless we rephrase that as well, unless you're willing to be annexed.
Yeah.
That's more like, if your business wants to touch that point, it's the only reason we locate Wolf Creek Park is to avoid municipality being.
And I, I think I've had the same, not, not, I think I've had the conversation, only annexed.
I, I don't know what Brad's heard, but they agreed a long time ago that they would annex.
Annex.
Where the seven hundred and fifty acres are, and that would have a B N O tax.
Why haven't you done it?
And then, we haven't developed it, so. And then, and then they agreed to take the, the area that the business part of it was supposed to go and not do a B N O tax and absorb all the sewage on that. So we've never heard that they're all of a sudden going to no longer honor that.
Could you guys just touch base with Bill again?
Sure.
And, and confirm, you know, come up with a, with a plan, because to come up with a plan, I mean, if that's, if, to me, the amount that Jeff just spoke is, is nominal with, with regard to the eight point one million that we have for infrastructure improvements. If that's all it is, and that will get us rolling, I think that's feasible. I mean, but, but we need the plan, and we need all this worked out with, with Oak Hill, because I, I do not think we need to annex that part to Oak Hill. I mean, or at least, you know, the.
The whole thing.
Right, 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 right. And, and I want to understand the implications of all that, but would you guys mind having that ready or try to have something ready for us by the July twenty-second meeting?
Absolutely, that'd be great. You know, we actually have a fully engineered plan to extend the road all the way to the cemetery. I mean, there's a lot of stuff in place that we've never been able to act on because of money. So, yeah, let's do that.
Okay, so, so let's just add that to the agenda, I don't think we need to, to move anything or do anything, but if you would do that, that would be great.
This is a summary.
Yeah, so, because on, on, with the seven hundred and fifty acres being transferred to the land trust, that going to ball under, or you call it residential acreage, because there is that agreement with that being annexed in the city of Oak Hill, that seven hundred and fifty acres was annexed, annexed in the city of Oak Hill, would, it would, it would pose, if from legal construct, it would allow, open the door for basically a forced annexation of some of the small businesses that exist in Wolf Creek Park, because then they'd be completely surrounded by municipalities, so that would drastically, that drastically impacting further with, I would say, seven hundred, as, as being one of the largest stakeholders in like land, in actual physical land that are in Wolf Creek Park, they, they, that's a pretty substantial plan change to redevelopment plan to Wolf Creek Park, taking a thousand acres out here, we purchased it myself and other people that own, not just myself, but other small business centers out there. We bought into, we've sold this vision of, of an industrial, of an industrial.
Listen.
But, 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 I mean, I'm getting, getting to the point, that's a substantial change to the redevelopment plan, which that would need to be consented to by myself, Bridgebury Works, Robbins.
I want to see the plan first, and, well, that's, that's a thing. So on the twenty-second, this is, once, when they, when they bring their plan, then, then we can discuss all the implications and that sort of thing, because I don't, you know, I want to see the plan, and then I want to, you know, go over all the considerations, such as the ones you raised, on. go over all the considerations such as the ones you raised on that day. We don't have time to do it today, but I wanted to, but those are realistic and Mr. Taylor heard them and we'll discuss those with him as well. Mr. Wender?
Allison, would the commission consider, uh, with the infrastructure money that you have at your disposal, extending the road out to the cemetery? Whether it is for a business part, for, for a housing, obviously the road cost is enormous. And to open up that property with a paved road would make the sales, sales potentials to expand the road.
I would wanna see data to support that, but also, you know, feel free to present that as a part of your plan, Mr. Wender, when you guys come back.
You know, as far as data to support.
Open-minded about it, but I've, I'm thinking in terms of increments at this point because you've got something that's pretty easily addressable and that's a greater amount of money where we need to take a look at the overall development in the county and make sure that that's where that money should be prioritized as far as the road is concerned, but.
Yeah, as far as data to support a plan, you know, this is.
Well, I meant the road thing and.
Yeah, I'm talking about just back to what you were saying you wanted to hear from us. Jenna's gonna be the source for justification.
Yes.
We're not really in a position, we don't do our own market research and we can't really. You know, what we can do is like, it's been an ongoing conversation about exit plan for property and best thing for years. And so we can, we can present the plan, but I just want you to know that Jenna's gonna be probably the best.
I agree, and what I recommend you do is, is talk to her about it, you know? So she, so as we, and in fact, we're gonna discuss this some tomorrow, she's on the agenda tomorrow to discuss this. But, but talk to her about that idea.
Yeah.
And, and make sure that the people who are doing the plan consider that in, in the recommendations that, you know, they make to us.
Anything else?
Just a good executive summary.
Cool. Thanks a lot.
All right, um.
That should be it.
That should be it, and we had a time-sensitive personnel issue come up and I, I move that we go into executive session to discuss it.
A second. Okay. We will go into executive.
Thank you all for attending and participating.
Are you gonna do it?
Yeah, that can take.
Saturday.
Yeah. Um, I don't, he had, they don't have a time set up yet, it starts at eleven, so she's gonna, yes, she's gonna let us on there. He can't, he had to, he lost two in four days.
As soon as we get out of the executive.
That's where I need to see you.
He thought that was funny, actually.
Tom.
No, I'm doing that.
Yeah.
I'm doing the, I'm doing the boys.
Yeah.
Nobody called.
It's, it's.
K I A.
It's three oh four. Eighty-eight eight. Number one four nine.
We're driving by. Yeah, still.
And she's with N R G R E A.
Yeah, or.
I don't know.
You guys.
You guys.
She's interested in this, right?
Yeah, her last name's Bill.
Bill?
Yeah, she just needs current mayor.
I'm not the current.
Yeah. She's need Bibby to, uh, to tell him that, that it's time, you know, that she can have access to those.
Yeah, basically, I, I will admit, I think, uh, you're saying that, uh, new engineers are the best. And what I was thinking about is calling her and inviting her to that meeting.
Yeah, please do.
I mean, it's gonna be for the new council and everyone, so you might get up to speed real quick.
Good.
Okay, so.
Good.
All right.
Sounds good.
Okay, thanks, man.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You got your hands full.
Yeah, I do.
Here you are.
Okay.
Yeah, can you call freely and have him meet us in Ruth's office?
Thank you.
We're choosing. He's gonna, uh, put out the same. I would. Let's get back on page where we need to be.
He's, he's probably iterating a lot.
Thank you. Yeah, down six quarters. I mean, down even two.
We went to, into a executive session to discuss an emergency personnel matter that'll be on tomorrow's agenda. We made no decisions. We just had discussion and legal advice. And that said, I move to adjourn.